This meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees was previously called to order and I'm gonna wait on Mr. Newsom. There he is. It was previously called to order, the presence of a quorum has been established and the meeting has been called duly called and the notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. We are reconvening from executive session. We do have some action to follow, but not before the prayer and the pledge of Mr. Martinez.
Dear Heavenly Father, we love you, we thank you for your blessings, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here today and do your work. May everything we do begin with your inspiration and continue with your guidance. We come to you today asking for wisdom and understanding, please fill us with your grace as we make decisions that affect our students, teachers, and community. Lord, ask that you help us be models for our children and students, may they see us as loving and forgiving, peaceful and just, compassionate and generous, and full of hope. We trust you are with us during this time of noise and chaos, we ask you to draw close those who are sick, those who risk illness for us, care for them, protect them, and uplift them. And to those who grieve loss, we grieve with you, Father, we ask for your comfort and encouragement. May our time together unite us in our vision, strengthen our purpose, and be inspired by the dreams we have for our schools. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
(Inhales) Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, the one item we had coming out of executive session was considering approval of the superintendent's contract. And Dr. Crawford, I do believe we have a motion somewhere on that.
Mr. President, I move that the board extend Dr. Crawford's contract for an additional year to include a raise and that the board president be authorized to sign a contract addendum once prepared by legal counsel.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it and the motion carries. Dr. Crawford, we're happy to have you here as superintendent. We've had a heck of a run and look forward to, what, is this the seventh year?
Completing seven?
Yeah.
That contract to start in a rate and certainly appreciate the board's support and look forward to working with y'all as we end up better on the back end of this thing than when we get into it. And it's a mission here in Tyler. I grew up in East Texas and love Tyler, Texas. Y'all treated me extremely well. We've had success here and we just want to continue to have that success, so looking forward to that. Thank you very much.
Well, we appreciate your leadership. Any other comments or questions before we move on to school board appreciation? Okay. Okay, there's an item on here that says "school board appreciation." Apparently it is school board appreciation month.
Good evening, Board and Dr. Crawford. January is School Board Recognition Month, and tonight we are going to celebrate the commitment and the dedication that each of you give to Tyler ISD. Your positive leadership and guidance has led our district through a year like none we have ever seen. And for this, we want to say thank you. Thank you so very much. So please take a moment to view this video message from our Tyler ISD staff, students, parents, and community members.
Thank you, School Board.
Thank you, School Board.
Thank you, School Board, for all that you do.
Our school board members work hard at making a difference.
From all the students at Rise Academy, thank you, School Board.
We appreciate our school board for helping us keep our students healthy at our school.
Thank you, School Board, for helping me be all that I can be.
We'd like to thank the school board for helping us keep our students safe.
Thank you, School Board, for helping to provide nourishment for all students.
You make a difference for us.
Dan Crawford here, and I just want to say, I'm in my fifth year of being principal of Tyler Legacy High School. Along with Dr. Crawford and all of you, there's not a better group of people that I would like to work for.
We appreciate our school board members.
On behalf of Early College High School, we'd like to thank the school board for everything that you have done for us.
Thank you.
Thank you for all of your hard work.
Thank you, School Board, for being nothing but net.
Strong schools equal strong communities. Thank you, School Board.
Thank you, School Board.
Thank you, School Board, for supporting us and doing everything you do to help us succeed.
Thank you, School Board, for helping us to keep the school clean and sanitized.
Our Tyler ISD school board members are working hard to make a difference, as you can see, and we thank you from Tyler High School.
Thank you, TISD School Board, for working with the Tyler Chamber on making our community a better place for all.
Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Tyler ISD School Board. I'm Scott Martinez, President/CEO of the Tyler Economic Development Council. I appreciate everything and your service to the school district. Without a great workforce that you're creating at the school district, we couldn't do what we do in economic development, so thank you.
We appreciate you for serving our students and our staff.
We appreciate you.
TIC Board, as a Chair of the Chamber of Commerce, as an advocate for education, and as a parent for two ISD students, thank you so much for what you all do, what y'all have done, and what you're gonna continue to do for those students coming through to make us all a better community. Thank you.
Thank you for believing in me.
Thank you for believing in me.
In me.
Thank you for believing in us.
In all of us.
All of us.
Thank you for believing in all of us.
Again, thank you so much for all that y'all do. We hope that you also enjoy your certificates that were each placed at your seats. Moving on now to our special recognition section, if that's okay, Mr. President.
I was just gonna say, thank everybody out there, watching, not watching, that had anything to do with us being in this seat, for believing in us, because it's an honor to serve. And it's, we do feel appreciated, so thank you.
Tonight, we would like to begin our recognitions by announcing our January District Student of the Month. The Elementary Student of the Month is Mariah Papoka Hartfield, a fifth grade student at Pete Elementary School. The Secondary Student of the Month is Zaire Clark. He is an eighth grade student at Hubbard Middle School. And at this time, please join us in watching a brief video about these two outstanding Tyler ISD students.
Tyler ISD would like to recognize the efforts of our two district students of the month. These students are selected by the display of their unique outstanding qualities. We believe these qualities lead to successful student outcomes both in and outside of the classroom. First, we would like to recognize Mariah Papoka Hartfield, a fifth grade student at Pete Elementary. Mariah is a bright student and an analytical problem solver. Her favorite subject is math because it gives her a chance to break down complicated problems into simple steps.
I've always liked math. I get it from my father because he loves math, but it's just fun to do. You have to like figure out what the question's meaning to say, and then you have to try to do that, and usually they're multi-step, so you have to do more than one equation to try to get the answers right.
Mariah walks the talk of the Pete Elementary Wildcats and is a model for positive leadership. She enjoys helping her classmates finish their work, and she's even started a club to help keep her campus clean.
We're the decorator crew. Every Tuesday after school, we help the custodians clean up the halls and the classrooms and stuff. Usually while the fifth graders eat lunch, they usually clean and pick up everything, so then I wanted to start helping them, so they didn't have to.
She hopes to one day be a teacher or a nurse, so she can continue helping those in need.
We're so proud of you. You've done a great job here at Pete, from what I understand, and I'm honored to be able to present this to you today, so congratulations on Student of the Month.
Next, we want to congratulate Zaire Clark, an eighth grader at Hubbard Middle School, and our Secondary Student of the Month. Zaire is a driven and enthusiastic student and has spent his time at Hubbard rapidly improving in his classes. He is a very successful Hubbard Husky and has drastically improved his grades.
I get lots of good grades, and I'm improving a lot. I study a lot harder.
Zaire has a love of learning that is easy for all to see. He has many different interests and passions, and he likes exploring them in his classes.
I'm involved in 3A3 classes. I really like to read history, but my favorite world history would have to be medieval.
And he says he hopes to one day be an engineer for NASA.
We look for great things from you in the future, and I know Mr. Sherman and all the staff here at Hubbard are just so proud that you're this month Tyler Independent School District Student of the Month. Congratulations.
At Tyler ISD, we are committed to graduating all students with the knowledge, skills, and habits necessary for success in college, careers, and life. Congratulations to these students for their hard work, dedication, and character. Well done, students. Keep up the good work.
We also have another video to share as we announce tonight that we are celebrating our district teacher of the month, Emily Kubara, a third grade math and science teacher at Jones Elementary School. Ms. Kubara is dedicated to successful student outcomes. She has great relationships with her students and partners with families to encourage their students to always do their best and have a growth mindset. In her classroom, flexible seating allows her to accommodate various learning styles. She is data-driven to ensure her students are meeting district, campus, classroom, and individual goals. Congratulations to Mrs. Kubara. And this concludes our recognitions for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations to everybody. Done with special recognition, we actually do have somebody for public participation tonight, Karen Bolt. Hi, Ms. Bolt, how are you? Actually grew up on Bolt Street here in Tyler.
Can I take this off the top?
Yes, ma'am, if you want to.
I think I need a stool. Okay. Thank you for letting me come and speak. I went by the administration building and got a bunch of information, and it gave me a lot of questions to ask, but I'm going to talk with Mr. Jones about most of the questions. But I did want to mention something that I noticed in the qualifications requirements for teachers, and there were three sets of papers that I received, one for elementary, one for middle school, and one for high school. And I compared them all, they were all identical except for items 28 and 29 that were on the elementary paper requirements, which I thought was kind of odd, but it seemed to me it'd be efficient if it was all combined into one sheet of set instead of having to print out three different ones since they're all alike except for those number 28, 29, which you might want to check that out. I also noticed in the teacher qualifications requirements, it did not mention that they, a teacher, a person applying, would have to show their birth certificate, or just as you do to renew your driver's license now, and it also doesn't mention they have to show proof of U.S. citizenship or swear allegiance to upholding the U.S. Constitution. And I think all of these are very important because I don't have children in the system at the moment, but I do have my great-granddaughters, so I'm very interested in what they are being taught, and I would really prefer them to have teachers that do have these qualifications that are citizens of our country and do uphold and adhere to and revere our Constitution. So I would appreciate if you would give this consideration and consider adding these to your teacher requirements, because I was thinking back 18 years ago when I went to apply to be a substitute teacher, that that was on there, that you had to swear to uphold and to honor our U.S. Constitution. So that is all I have to say. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bolt. Okay, moving on to the approval of minutes, we have a board workshop from December 1st, 2020, and a regular meeting on December 14th. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second? I have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. We do have an action item here. It's the approval of the annual audit for the 2019 and 2020 fiscal year.
Mr. Washman, tonight, we are meeting our statutory requirement to have the audit presented to the school board. Our audit partner, Prother Willhelmy, are here tonight to present that. We'll let them introduce themselves, but we are certainly glad that this process is wrapped up, just like we do every year, and I think they have some quality information to provide you. I want to thank Ms. Coker for assisting with the audit as well, along with our Financial Services Division, Tasha Bjork and Mary Russell, who lead that. Mr. Prothero?
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. I'm Tom Prothero with Prothero Willhelmy, and this is AJ Evans, CPA with our firm. He's a superintendent. So tonight, we're presenting just some highlights on the audit. I believe a copy has been given to each one of you. We just have some brief comments, and then we're available for any questions. I want to give some thanks to three folks, and I'm gonna say their full title because they're really cool titles. So Tasha Bjork, CPA, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations; Mary Russell, CPA, Executive Director of Financial Services; and Jan Coker, CPA, Director of Internal Audit and Consulting Services. Really high-quality folks, and I think you should be very, very proud of them. This is the eighth year in a row that we have conducted the audit. We do appreciate the trust that the board has in us, in our firm. And this is one of the best audits that we do. Our staff just loves being on this engagement. The information that we need is well organized, and the people are very, very helpful. One of the benefits you receive with studying with the same firm is that you limit somewhat the training that you have to do by TISD personnel for new auditors. One of the perceived negatives is the question, do you get a fresh look? And do you get a new approach periodically? The answer to that question is yes. AJ Evans, who ran the audit this year, is an example. He was new to the engagement this year, and he brought in a new set of eyes and a new approach. One other process we've instituted is that for several years, we have an independent person look at the audit in the final review stage. In summary, we feel very confident about the quality of the audit. Last week, we met with the audit committee, reviewed the audit, and answered any of their questions. Next, I'll just briefly discuss our auditor's opinion and then hand it over to Mr. Evans for some remarks, and we will be happy to answer any questions that you might have. TISD executive management is responsible for the financial statements. Our responsibility is to perform an audit and to report on that in our opinion. This year's opinion, as in years past, is the highest level of opinion that we can give. Based upon our audit, we believe the financial statements are fairly presented. What our opinion does not fully recognize, however, is a challenge that the TISD had during the past COVID year. Mr. Evans will address that aspect along with a prepared remarks. Mr. Evans?
Thank you. First off, I'd like to extend my gratitude to the board, Dr. Crawford, for the ability and the opportunity to do this audit. It was a great experience. I'd also like to extend my gratitude to Ms. Bjork, Ms. Russell, and Ms. Coker for their expertise, professionalism, and guidance as we worked through this audit. As Tom said, we were able to get a fresh set of eyes this year on the audit. This was my first year working on this engagement, working as the lead on this job. I was very impressed by the overall quality, the competence, and clarity that was upheld in the district's books. Of course, the final product of an audit is your comprehensive annual financial report. I have here all 148 pages of it. So this is the hard work of y'all's finance department. You know, for the year ended August 31st, 2019, which was, of course, last year, the district received a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. We fully expect that this report for fiscal year 2020 will receive that same distinction. As part of our audit, we test relevant controls of the district as a whole. Additionally, we look at the controls and compliance with federal programs as part of our single audit. We're pleased to report that controls as a whole and compliance that we tested are performing as designed, and overall, the financial operations of the district are considered stellar. Additionally, and lastly, we would like to highlight the financial management of the district through the COVID-19 pandemic, and we consider that it's been outstanding. With any audit we've been performing during the pandemic, we consider the potential that the economic and workflow hurdles caused by COVID-19 could have a negative impact. But again, we're pleased to report that despite the pandemic, the maintenance of internal controls, the overall financial outcomes of the district for this year were very favorable and further point to the leadership strength of the board and the management team in place. So thank you again for the opportunity to work with you all. We look forward to it every year. We appreciate the diligence, and we're thankful to be a member and a part of such a cornerstone of our community by being able to work with you all. So Tom and I are happy to field any questions that you all may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. I'll hand it over to anybody on the board that might have any comments or questions, or if anybody from the audit committee might want to step out and lead, then that would be great.
As I said, the audit committee met with the auditors both with TISD management and then also without TISD management. The report that we received was consistent with what you've heard publicly tonight, no reservations about the quality of staff, no reservations about the cooperation of staff with this process, high marks all the way around. They did coach us on a couple of items that they thought we should consider in our internal audit plan, which we're doing. So overall, a clean report, and we said at the audit committee, but thank you to Ms. Bjork, Ms. Russell, and Ms. Coker for the excellent work in helping the district.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I'll say we appreciate the work that you do, continually do, for the district and Tasha and the gang over there, too. Always good to hear about, it's always good to get clean marks there. And we want to inspect everything we're doing and make sure we're doing it right, and thank you for handling that, Mr. Prothero and AJ, and we just appreciate y'all's presentation.
Dr. Crawford, do you have anything?
No, I just, again, appreciate working with a local firm on this, and certainly excited that y'all keep engaging us and want to do this job when some of your peers do not want to do it. I just don't know if school district audits are intriguing to firms such as yours. But I will say this, I think that, you know, things point over there to Ms. Bjork's shop, and she gets embarrassed whenever I say things, but, you know, Tasha, you were hired because you used to work for the group that used to audit this school system 20-plus years ago, correct? And we certainly get a little bit spoiled at the quality of operational controls that we have coming out of her shop, and I think that 20 years later, we just don't have too many people that remember, and I wasn't even here, but certainly the potential that we had for us to be in disarray. So I wanted to make sure we say that again, just to embarrass her, but I think that the audit report does come out and say that we do have a quality, day-to-day operational structure and system here in Tyler ISD as far as taking care of the taxpayers' dollars that they benevolently give us.
In a year of so much uncertainty, especially, can't be overstated. Thank you. Appreciate y'all coming out. Okay, so that does require approval for the annual audit, so I'll go ahead and entertain a motion for approval.
I move we approve the annual audit.
Thank you, Mr. Burckfield. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right, Dr. Nation, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We have our continuous improvement portion, which is a few updates, athletic, visual, and performing arts, competitive academics, and M-class middle-of-the-year summary, so we'll sit back and...
Yeah, let's prioritize this and let's bump D up to the front, so we can spend our majority of time on that.
Okay.
Certainly, we'll have athletics, VPA, and competitive academics in a minute, so we'll go ahead and invite up Dr. Kristi Hansen, Dr. James Kurton. Y'all know Dr. Hansen, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction. Dr. Kurton is the Director of Assessment and Accountability. We'll let you guys present the M-class, middle-of-the-year M-class data to the board.
Thank you, Dr. Crawford, Mr. Washman, and the board. Appreciate the opportunity to bring the M-class data to you. I did want to, oh, thank you, I did want to just sort of explain what M-class Amplify is. It is an assessment that we give to the students in kindergarten through second grade, and we do that three times a year, beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year. This data, just so you know, is reported to TEA. So this came out of House Bill III that we would be reporting data for all of our grade levels to TEA, so this is the first school year that we've actually done that. It does assess reading skills, and it does assess multiple skills, and it is given one-on-one. So this assessment is given one-on-one by the teacher. The difference with this data that you may be used to with Star Renaissance and MAP data is we were able to somewhat project star success with that data. This data does not project star success. It simply tells you where the students are at that given time on that given day. Okay? So the data that we are showing you today is growth, predominantly growth data, so it will compare the students who took the test at the beginning of the year in comparison to the students who took the test at the middle of the year. And the reason that that's significant is not all students were here at the beginning of the year, if you remember. And although we did ask a lot of our virtual students to come in and take the test, many of them declined. So this cohort data is simply the students who took the test at the beginning of the year in comparison to the students, the same students who took the test at the middle of the year. So there are a lot of students that may have taken the test in the middle of the year, but we didn't have any beginning-of-the-year data. You'll see that data at the end of the year, when they take it the third time. So just wanted to clarify that really quickly. So this first slide is overall data. These are the percentage of students with middle-of-the-year higher performance, and then the percentage of students with average, above-average, or well-above-average growth. So the first one is performance, just plain-out performance, and the second one is growth in comparison to middle-of-the-year, I mean, beginning-of-the-year, okay? So kindergarten, for example, that is a percentage number of the students, just a performance number. They were right at about 56% that had higher performance, or higher middle-of-the-year performance, sorry. Those are students who had higher performance in the middle of the year than they did at the beginning of the year. Sorry, let me just re-say that. And then the other one is they actually scored average, above-average, or well-above-average. It's still growth data, though. Okay. Now, this next one is, again, kindergarten through second grade, and this one helps you kind of compare where students were at the beginning of the year and where they were in the middle of the year as far as well-below benchmark, below benchmark, or above benchmark. benchmark. So that kind of gives you that impression. Okay? And then we're gonna, and then this, this particular slide, we broke it down by ethnicity and this gives you the growth of ethnicity by grade level. And then the next one in this, this is proficiency for K and this, these are your specific skills. And this data is especially helpful for principals and teachers and CNI people because we can look at where overall maybe we're not getting the growth that we want and we can kind of say, what do we need to be doing in curriculum or instructional strategies to really improve that? Also just know that at the campus level, they run this by student. So they're able to drill down where each specific student could use some extra intervention and they have all done that. The executive directors of schools have met with the principals, they have pulled all of that data, they've put together an M-class plan so that they are ready to go to help make sure that all of their kids grow by the end of the year. The principals and the school people have really done a great job at, at really taking this data seriously and knowing how they can grow kids. What questions about that can I answer for you?
I have a question. I may have asked it before.
Okay.
But does this take the place of the LTPRI and TASL?
It, yes.
And is it more in-depth?
It's, yes, so that's a great question and yes, it does and it is an individual test and so in some ways it is more in-depth. Um, so it, it is more of, um, Dr. Nation's more, it has the dibbles. So there is a, it is a very comprehensive exa- uh, test, assessment that the kids take. And it, and quite frankly, it takes a while for the teachers to administer it to everyone because they have to do it, you know, individually with the students. So, but it does give us really good data.
Thank you.
You went old-school with the TPRI.
That's right. That's right. You aged us all, Dr. Nations, when you talked about that.
And we go after the number of students like the, at the beginning of year and mid-year. Since we know a lot of kids weren't there at the beginning of the year, the, the percentages really probably don't take that in consideration that you had more students, uh, in the middle of the year than you did at the beginning, does it?
We certainly, yes, we had, now that's cohort data, so the data you're looking at is a comparison of the students at the beginning of the year compared to the students at the middle. So you're not seeing students in this data that just took it in the middle.
Okay.
You're not seeing that because that's just performance data, it doesn't really give us any information.
They had to be eligible to take both.
Right. They had to taken both for you to see any of this data.
But they did take a, the ones that weren't here with us did take a middle-of-the-year and we'll have that data, we'll have everybody's data at the end of the year to see, to see how they came.
Right. But to answer your question, the sample size does make a difference. So, um, if, if for example, we had just a few students in a certain group, um, let, let's say 10 or 12 in second grade, uh, then that one or two of them not doing well would really make that look, uh, that data look differently.
But that's a, but that's a, a campus.
That's right. And the campus has pulled all that, so they're very...
We're, we're large enough to where this aggregate here gives us a decent enough sample size to give us a broad overview of what's going on.
We actually did pull the sample sizes at the district level and didn't see that the sample size would have made a statistical difference as far as that goes.
Yeah, just for an example, whenever we were looking at this data and I looked flipping through individual campuses and we look at one by teacher and I go, what in the world happened right here? And there's some type of anomaly, they were only like testing two kids. And so there are some, there are some situations where there were smaller sample sizes, but it does not include that here. We have a...
We had a, we had a...
I'm not sure how many kids we tested overall, but it was enough for validity, wasn't it? We had liability, okay.
Yes. We made sure of that.
I have a question. I'm looking at the data for African-Americans in first grade.
Yes, ma'am.
Beginning of the year they were 23 and middle of the year they went down to 22. But you said is each student on campus is, um, each campus is done by students so they know what each student needs.
Yes, ma'am.
And so what's, um, I'm just concerned with what's going on, they've gotten worse, so is it phonemic awareness or is it something that they need to help them to...
Right. So obviously we have noticed that the first and second grade, African-American students, um, the fir- the first grade went down a couple of points, the second grade, um, stayed the same. So for both of those, we didn't see the growth. Um, and so we, we realized that the campuses have worked on that there. We were not just able to disaggregate the data to one specific skill as a district. Um, but we, the campuses have looked at that, so they are, they are right now implementing intervention for that specific, those specific students. I will tell you that as a district, we disaggregate that data to determine what do we need to do to make the curriculum better or offer more suggestions or do some coaching. And because it really didn't happen in one specific area, we have some thinking about, you know, where we were this last semester about being able to purely implement our, uh, science of teaching reading strategies and trying to do that virtually and kind of how, some of that, you just need to be face-to-face with kids, right? So, um, so we have some guesses about that, but, um, we don't have a specific, like this is the silver bullet that can fix it. We know what we need to do to fix it for next year, but we can't really describe why it happened this semester.
Can you flip to the slide that has the skills?
Yes, sir.
Uh, so in general, the lowest ones would be phonemic awareness and letter sounds decoding, so kind of roughly phonics altogether. Have you noticed a difference in, uh, or seen any initial return on the professional development work done in those areas? I know that's been an area of focus for the last couple of years.
So I'm going to answer that question. We, I mean, the reading fluency, for example, we kind of know that that one's not going to be super high in kindergarten first and second, so that one we, we sort of anticipate how that would work for kids. Uh, the phonemic awareness, we would have anticipated that that would be a little higher. And I just want to take us back through the timeline with our work with the, the science of teaching reading. So we did that intensive training in 2019 with principals. Everybody is all on board. The whole fall semester, we have technical assistants and Children's Learning Institute coming in and providing all the training and letters, providing all the training. Everything's great and then the wheels fall off in March. And, and we really were not able, although we tried to do a lot of that virtually, it's really hard to do that type of PD without people actually being in the classroom and us being able to see how it's being implemented. So then we came back to it this fall, but again, we ran into the virtual and kids not here and quarantines and all the things. So, um, I can't conclusively say that we are seeing a great return on it right now. That we do have 100, no, 72 people that are going through the second part of letters and they're, you know, they are seemingly benefiting from it and, um, and we do have seven campuses that are doing the reading academies and they're turning in, when they're turning in their artifacts, meaning, you know, the things that TEA requires and the phonemic awareness lessons, they're doing a great job. Um, so we feel like it's going to finally catch up with us and our plan is to, to double down on that and even do more and better training, um, this coming year, especially at the campuses where we know we have the highest risk loads. And, um, so we feel confident that we will get the benefit of that, but it's just, I feel like it's delayed.
One thing I'll say, last summer compared to this summer, even though the health data's worse, I mean, our plans are is, is to not sit back and just wait for the virus to control what we're doing. I mean, we'll, we'll cer- certainly be safe and cautious of what we're doing, but there is no excuse now. I mean, I think we've all grown to get used to what we're, the, the situation we're in. Hopefully it improves, um, so I think that we can get back on track with our letters and, and our Voyager training that we were so excited about and our teachers were excited about too, so. Good, good PD opportunities this summer, um, coming up. In-person.
In-person PD this summer. Everybody's going to mask up and we're going to make it work. The virtual PD, everybody's got, giving it their best, you know, Boy Scout try, but, um, we really need to be face-to-face with teachers and they need to be face-to-face with our top presenters, um...
And we need to get them vaccinated too, if anybody from the state's listening to this right now.
So, um...
Second question, you mentioned that this was dibbles-based, um, and so the mid-year performance level is actually higher than the beginning year.
Yes, this is where the, we would anticipate for them to, so it's compared to where they, we would anticipate that they would grow. So if you go back, Jane, Dr. Kurton, if you can go back all the way, see that would be the well-abo- below benchmark of where a kindergarten student is anticipated to be at that point. Um, and if we go back one more, so with, with average, above-average, or well-above-average growth. So that is compared to where we would anticipate kids would grow.
So even if a child stayed in the same category from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year, that actually does reflect growth. It reflects the normal amount of growth. For them to move into a higher category is acceleration.
That is a data statistical question. I'm going to look right over to Dr. Kurton. Ask me about the curriculum.
So, yes, they can actually stay in that same proficiency, but they can have significant growth. So they, so like our students that come in performing at the fifth or sixth percentile, they're considered well below the benchmark. They can have well-above-average growth, but they're still, at this point, considered well below benchmark. So absolutely, they can stay in the same proficiency, so it would look like they're not improving, but when you break down the data and look at it, they're actually, they are growing.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? All right. We do appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to, uh, the calendar, board, governance oversight and reporting. We certainly do value academic achievement and growth for our students there too, but we also have some local things that are important with us, starting with athletics, be, uh, starting with athletics with Coach Priest and then visual performing arts, St. Newton, you'll be on deck and in the hole. Speaking athletically, we'll have competitive academics with Gary Brown. So Coach Priest, your mid-year report is due.
Well, good evening, board. Uh, evening. Dr. Crawford, thank you guys for letting me come and give you an update on athletics today. As you know, I mean, this has definitely been a challenging year, uh, for everybody and athletics is no exception in this and, and, but I think we've got good protocols in place and a good process and, and, uh, so we're, we're navigating our way through it. But I do want to thank Rachel Barber. Uh, she's got a tough job, uh, her and her staff, the nurses, uh, just everything that they've done to keep our athletes on, on the field and on the court, uh, you know, all the nurses, the athletic trainers, and our coaches. I mean, they've done a great job. I mean, we've had a few hiccups along the way, uh, you know, and we're continuing, like I said, continuing to navigate through this thing and, uh, fortunately, we've been able to get our football season, our volleyball seasons and those things finished and completed and now we're into basketball and, uh, there's been several teams in the, you know, in, in the legacy district that have, uh, had a lot of issues and so we've had games delayed or postponed and so, but we, you know, hopefully we're going to make it through it and then once we get through this, then we're, now we're hitting our spring sports and so hopefully we'll be able to finish the season, uh, unlike we did last year. So, so, but I do want to thank Rachel for all her hard work and effort that they've done to keep us on the field, so. Uh, on the presentation tonight, what I, what I gave you, I gave you our, our achievement for achievements in our finishes and what we have for, uh, you know, most of our fall sports, uh, you know, starting with football, gave you the, the, where we finished in the district, our records and then, then, uh, some of our awards, but, uh, you know, definitely for Tyler High Football, definitely not a year that we've, we're accustomed to having. Uh, you know, I think we've got some plans in place, have played a lot of young players and so, uh, hopefully we got a plan to, to get that back going on track to what we're used to. Tyler Legacy, uh, under direction for sure, head coach, Coach Willis, uh, by district champions, that's the first time since 2009, so, uh, feel, feel very good about where we're going in that direction and, uh, numbers have stayed up, so, so feel very good about that. As far as volleyball, uh, both teams, uh, both went, you know, finished third and fourth in district, uh, both by district qualifiers and then, uh, unfortunately for Legacy and their, their event, we did have a COVID issue where we, where we had to send our freshman team and with a couple of varsity players and, uh, played a very strong Saxon group that, uh, uh, you know, kind of showed us where we need to be eventually, so. Uh, but that's, that's our finishes in football and volleyball. As far as for cross-country, uh, give you the finish for Tyler High and then for Legacy, uh, Legacy had a very strong year. The boys won in the district championship, Nick Knight making another return to, uh, to the ULL State Turn- the ULL State Tournament. Girls runner-up, Trudy Land was a district champion and so very solid year for cross-country. Uh, as far as team tennis, uh, Alex Quinones over at Tyler High, boy, he's done a very good job. Coach, Coach Sizemore, you know, was there several years ago and now he's at Legacy, but he got that program going really well and then we brought Alex in and he's continued to, to really improve that, that program over there and they finished second. They played White House for the last match of the year for the district championship and unfortunately, we didn't get it, but, but, uh, but we were right there, so, yeah, he's continued to, to really do a great job. And then, you know, Coach Sizemore over at Tyler Legacy, five-time, five consecutive district championships and was able to make it to the regional semifinals this year. And Coach Sizemore was the region two coach of the year for six A's, so great job on those guys. Uh, like I said, a very strong fall. Legacy has had, had every program so far to date make the playoffs, uh, so that's way ahead. There are no long, long star cut points this year, so I, I can't give you an update on that. They have not done that, but, uh, and, and then as far as, uh, Tyler High, you know, we had, had tennis and volleyball make the playoffs.
Coach Alex at Tyler High is the toughest bus driver I've ever seen.
That is no question.
Y'all are familiar with that little thing we had, a few, he was the, the guy, the driver. So anyways, just thought I'd throw that little piece of information in there. Tough guy.
Yeah, had, had a wreck.
No kids on it.
No kids on it.
Not our fault.
Had the wreck, uh, went and got another bus, went and picked up the kids and went to a tournament. So, uh, that, he, he is a, he's, he's a good one, so, and he's for sure a keeper. Uh, on this next slide, I, I just gave you some participation numbers and that is where you can kind of see based off the last three years, uh, for Tyler High and for Legacy. Uh, so I'm giving you all the, the football, volleyball for varsity JV freshmen and then, then also give you the totals. Uh, as you can see, you know, most of our numbers stayed, for, for the majority of our sports have stayed pretty consistent. Uh, there are a few sports that have dropped, uh, and, and the one that is the biggest is football. Uh, as you can see for the total for football, uh, last year we got 141 at Tyler High and this year we had 106. We did not have a freshman team this year, our numbers were low, it was, it was, we had skilled players, but we didn't have the linemen. And so we made the decision to combine those teams to, to do that and so, uh, I, I met with Coach Holmes, uh, at our end of the year and, you know, we're really trying to address the numbers to try to get those things back up and, and we'll touch on that a minute on, on middle school, but, uh, but as far as volleyball, those numbers have kind of stayed pretty consistent at both high schools. Uh, as you can see, Legacy's numbers have stayed in football, you know, 211 last year, 209 this year, so, so pretty consistent, uh, but that one number over at Tyler High in football is, is one that we really need to address and very alarming for us. Now touching on to the middle school, in, in here's where you'll kind of see, and, and this is not a thing that is kind of, you know, I know the last few years we, when I've had this update, we've always talked about Volter and, and as far as football and, and if you can see, you know, seventh grade, uh, back in, uh, last year we had 70, this year we had 44. Uh, eighth grade, you know, we're, we've been hanging right around that 37, 38, uh, number and, and that number just has to get higher, uh, for us to be able to compete, you know, at 5A, 6A levels and, and, and we've got to be able to do that. And then if you look over at Moore, you know, the Moore seventh grade, kind of the same, that's a low number compared to the other schools and really, uh, you know, at 41, 47. But then you look at the eighth grade, we had 64 kids, uh, there were 64 eighth graders last year and only 32 this year. So, you know, that's, that's one that, got to get in those two schools and really address those sixth graders and, and, uh, you know, visit with Coach Holmes today about making sure that he gets over and addresses the sixth graders and gets in front of them, gets that staff there. Uh, you know, we've had the, for sure the virtual learning didn't help us this year. Uh, you know, I think one other issue that we've had is, you know, in the past, uh, and, and this year too, you know, as far as physicals and getting their, getting their online forms and, and it's just been a battle to, to get those kids, to get those, get... and, and it's just been a battle to, to get those kids, to get those, get their physical, and then they show up the first day, and they don't have the physical, and they're sitting in the bleachers, and they can't participate, and, and they just never get it. And so we've got to do a better job of finding ways to ma, be able to get them, and if that takes us going to their house, and having them fill out their forms, and doing those, doing a home visit, just to be able to do some things to be able to get those kids, but we have to get better retention. First, get the sixth graders going into seventh grade, get those kids out for football, and, and then, and then being able to have great retention from seventh grade to eighth grade, and then retaining them, and get some guys going from eighth grade to ninth grade. Got, got to do it. So that's on Bolter and Moore, and then when we move to Hubbard, you can kind of see those numbers here. These numbers are way better, still a little lower than what, on, on some of them, that what we'd like to have, you know, our, our ideal numbers would probably be to have 75 seventh graders. Then it's, you're going to, you're going to lose some kids, because kids aren't, you know, from seventh to eighth grade, once they try it, and, and you're not going to have as many. So if we can keep it around 60, 55 to 60 in that eighth grade, and then, and then trying to hold on to them and get them to go to high school, and, and being able to keep staying in our program, so. You know, but like I said, our volleyball, cross-country numbers, all, all those are, are the same. We've had great, as far as for tennis, those numbers are really jumping up, a lot of kids in the tennis program. Swim is, is, this year, those numbers are a little bit down, but for the most part, they're, they're, you know, they're, we're, we're getting there, and we're getting in those sports, but I, I like where we're going, we just have to address some issues, and like I said, the, the COVID year with, with, you know, virtual learning, that, that kind of hurt us a little bit, but, but I think now that we're back in, back in, basketball is fine, and I think we're going to be really good for soccer and, and, and our track seasons. And then there's just some pictures right there, but a couple of other things that I just want to make note of, as I mentioned, no long star cut points this year. If they do that, I'll be sure to update that. This is the second year that we've done it, and I know we've got several coaches in here. Mr. Washman and, and Dr. Crawford have both coaching this year, and the second, this is our second year to host the, the Youth Basketball League. You know, that's going well right now. We do have, so I, I think that will definitely benefit us in years to come, being able to get those kids, you know, introduced to the game, and, and, but we've got 550 kids in that program right now. Last year, unfortunately, we were not able to extend it out to volleyball because of COVID, but we plan to roll that out and go into volleyball, and then we're looking at other sports as we move forward. And then the last, last thing is, you know, we just entered, you know, we just launched our new website and, and athletic app, so that'll give us a chance to reach out to people, and, you know, people will be able to kind of, everything in one, being able to get alerts, schedules, rosters, tickets, all that information all in one. So that is the update on athletics, and be happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Board, anybody have any questions or comments for Coach Priest?
We'll say that I do think the youth basketball program will yield dividends for us on multiple levels in the coming years. I think getting kids in the sport, learning the fundamentals, will help them when they really get playing competitive in seventh grade. I mean, you know, I've watched some seventh grade basketball this year, and, you know, it's honestly, just being able to play within a, a game environment is, learning to do that makes your team so much better, so if you can get over that learning curve in early age, then you'll be in good shape, so.
Yeah, I, I have a daughter that is in seventh grade, so I get to see my fair share of seventh grade basketball, and, and I think some of her team did play last year, but what you see now on some of those teams in seventh grade, that's what we need to prevent. As long as we can get these kids playing in third, fourth, fifth, then they will not come into seventh grade just with not a lot of knowledge, and so that's, that's our main goal, and, you know, like I said, we're going to touch the volleyball, and, and we've had people ask about other sports, and so we're going to do everything we can. It's, it's an undertaking, but it's, it's well worth it, and, and we've had great participation, and so, so we know there's a need.
You know, there's a, I'm excited about the future for obviously opportunity to make our high school program stronger, but, you know, thanks to people like the Fair Foundation, who donated a lot of money for us to be able to offer this a very affordable prize for kids to participate when there was a void there. I think it's good to give them something to do once or twice, three times a week. I just know some of the kids that have never touched a basketball that, that are on my team, the joy that they have in going to a practice two times a week, showing up at a basketball game, when we weren't providing that for our kids in our community, that warms my heart. I mean, there's probably some kids probably will never play, you know, past this, but at the same time, I think it's cool that we're able to do that, and they're around good people. Now, we do have some character issues that we need to work on, that are starting to pop up a little bit. We need to coach our coaches on how to deal with language, and we're doing that, certainly it's third and fourth grade. So, not our coaches, I'm talking about the kids on the court. Maybe, maybe there are some coaches, I don't know.
Probably some of the stands, too.
I know it's not happening with the Lady Aces in sixth grade division, but hey, I, again, I think it's just neat that we're able to do this. We have great facilities that our community has giving us, given us, and I have a little bit of nostalgia in me and the old school, and I just thought, why are we not opening up our gyms on Saturdays in the fall, give our kids something to do for seven weekends? And it's, it's been great. Thanks, kudos to Coach Priest, Coach Little, and Coach Gillespie for, for pulling that off, because it is a major undertaking for them to run this, along with some of our other coaches, to run this, this program, when they have middle school and high school games stacked up on top of each other in a lot of other different sports. They are truly servants, because they're, they're doing this on Saturdays and doing it with a smile on their face, so very, very happy for that.
Yeah, and, and I do need to thank Sam Gillespie for, I mean, he, he organizes that, and then, you know, Donnie Little has gone out and found the sponsorships for us to be able to do it, because I think we, you know, last year, we did it at $25, and this year, we're doing it at $35. So, you know, it's a great benefit for, you know, for the community, and, you know, so we want to continue to do that, and, and, you know, I think a lot of, we, a lot of our teams are coached by our high school kids, and so that, that's pretty good that they're, they're reaching out, and I think they get to see, you know, they get to see what it's like to coach, so, and, and what our coaches go through.
And not to get too sappier, go far into it, but you also see a really good, cool exercising community, and, you know, getting kids from all walks of life that might not go to the same school. I mean, our kids are in school every day with each other, but this gives the opportunity for kids from different schools to come together and be teammates, you know, at an early age, and I think that's important. It's important for a community to thrive like that and come together on Saturdays, and be in the same gym, rooting on different kids from different schools, so I, I think that's beneficial as well. And I will say this, I, I know that this year, and I commend you for bringing us numbers that relate to years prior, both in education and in athletics. This is a tough year, I get that. I know downticks will happen in a COVID year, and so I'm, I'm, I want, want y'all to know that, from my perspective, that, you know, that's in the back of my mind when I'm looking at these numbers and I see downticks, and I go, oh, yeah, well, you know, I, I get why some kids probably aren't participating, so.
Yeah, I, I appreciate you saying that, but we've got to walk the halls. We've got to recruit our kids over the hallways and not just be content with whoever shows up. Sometimes all it takes is an adult going to put their arm around a kid and ask them to participate, and they'll, and they'll, they'll participate, but you got to go do it. You can't just be older than that and say, you must come play for me, and this is it. It's completely different than how we all grew up.
Okay, I have a question, because I hadn't heard about the program. I'm new to the board, but maybe, I, I didn't know anything, I didn't even know it existed. So how are we recruiting the kids? How are we publicizing the program?
Youth basketball program?
Yeah, right.
Coach Priest?
How are we, how are we publicizing it, recruiting, et cetera? Because like I said, I'm new, but I hadn't heard anything about it.
You're just talking about the youth, as far as the youth basketball program.
I use basketball, right.
Youth Basketball League. So we promote, you know, we go through communications, and we, we put out, you know, we put out flyers on social media and through, through, and we contact all of our principals, because this can, can only be within Tyler ISD, so kids, you have to be a, you have to be a student within Tyler ISD to, to play, so it can't be private school kids, you can't live just within the school district, you have to actually be enrolled in school. So we get all our information out to that, and, and, you know, it's 550 kids, so it's a lot. I mean, we, I think the first year, I think the first year in the girls division in third and fourth grade, I think we had maybe five, six teams. You know, we've got 10 this year, and, and then our fifth and sixth grade, I think we probably had about eight teams, and we, and now we're up to 12. So the, now the, the girls, we actually had to turn kids away, so it was, we capped it at 550, and we just did not have room, because we just don't have the, can't find the coaches. That's one of our main issues, is getting, you know, I, I think we can get the kids, it's really trying to find the adults to come and coach them, and, and so I think that's our biggest issue, but, but we, we want to continue to grow, but we promote it through, throughout the school, and, at, at each campus, and, and that's been very successful. We put signs up at all the, all the entrances, and, and just try to get out as much information as we can. But we had a waiting list for the guys this year.
That's good.
Yeah, so Coach Gillespie, the Assistant Athletic Director, presents to the principals. The principals take the, the principals meeting, the principals take them back to their campuses, engage their PE teachers to actually promote it within their PE classes. Their PE teachers actually this year provided us the grading on the, the skill level of the individual kids this year. Normally, we have trials. We also do some social media publications through Facebook and Twitter and what else? Is it Instagram?
We email every student that applies to the district, their parents.
Okay, so they, so every, every student in the district, the parents, the email that we have on file gets sent to the parent prior to the season, and that goes out in October?
We did send it out in October.
Yeah, in October.
Thank you.
And volleyball is going out now, so we've sent out volleyball. We hope to have the draft right after we come back from spring break.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
I just wanted to commend the district on having a COVID season this fall. I know you know this, because y'all did a great job with it, but having a senior, you know, all they want to do is play. All they want to do is play. It's their senior year, and I just think y'all handled it great, from the head coaches all the way through the AD and, and superintendent, just allowing these kids, putting the protocols in place so that they were safe, and then letting them play. So thank you, you did a great job. Couldn't have done better. I was proud that we were in Tyler and not in some of these other districts that seemed like they were stubbing their toe every time they turned around, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, we appreciate you. Coach Priest?
Thank you, guys.
Sandy Newton's making her way up here. She's the Director of Visual Performing Arts. In typical VPA fashion, her presentation's a little bit more colorful, but it's within the district template, so thank you, Sandy.
I'm smiling behind this.
I can tell you, your eyes are, your eyes are bright.
Dr. Crawford, Board, thank you so much for allowing me to give you this update on Visual Performing Arts in Tyler ISD. There's a quote by a child author, not a child author, writes children's books, and it's, "Science will get us over this, but the arts will get us through this." So as the arts programs in Tyler ISD look through what we could do in the midst of all of the pandemic and craziness, we focused on what we could do as opposed to what we couldn't do, and it jived really well with the district hashtag of adapt and deliver. So I have a unique presentation for you where campuses from across our district are demonstrating how they are adapting and delivering. So here are a few examples. Technology was used a great deal. We had a variety of arts-specific platforms that we could use. Art of Education for visual arts, Smart Music, Finale, and a director's toolbox for theater. There were a variety of online platforms that students and teachers had access to that they could use and were canvas-friendly. Teachers looked at, at keeping students safe and what materials they could use, and how they could use those materials in the classroom, and came up with unique ways to use light to teach music theory, or have pep rallies outside, or use unique supplies in an art classroom. I thank you to, also like to thank Rachel Barber, and I'd like to thank the Athletics Department, because we were still able to have band perform and drill team perform at our Friday games. Thank you to Athletics for setting up all those chairs down there and, and making it happen for our bands. They looked and sounded fantastic, and the drill teams. We also competed in the Region 21 UIL marching contest. Both performed incredibly well, and Tyler Legacy advanced to the area adjudication or area contest. Here are more examples of how we adapt and deliver. We had drive-through arts exhibits. We had performances for families with social distancing. We had protocols that we looked at, suggested protocols to keep our kids safe and families as they came to visit. VPA understands that our teachers need some care also, so we sent care packages to our teachers so that we made sure that they were staying healthy, too. And again, yet another example of how teachers were finding unique supplies, such as tinfoil to make Giacometti-style sculptures. The, another orchestra, Tyler Legacy Orchestra, had a great performance. It was so refreshing to see live music happen. We just hosted, Tyler ISD just hosted the East Texas Honor Orchestra at Tyler High School. Very careful for social distancing, but again, it was a wonderful opportunity to have students perform and parents get to see it. Richard Lee, right now, is teaching orchestra at Bolter Middle School. We have two sections of orchestra happening over there, so I'm sad that ETSO doesn't have a season, but I'm kind of happy ETSO doesn't have a season, so.
Maestro.
I'm sorry?
Maestro.
Maestro. Richard Lee, Maestro Richard Lee. So he's doing an excellent job over at Bolter, and to see the relationship that he has developed with those kids, they really love him. Not everybody who works actively in the arts has the ability to teach, but he definitely has the ability to teach, and come to find out, he was a middle school orchestra teacher in Canada before he became the maestro for ETSO. And we also had some incredible Dia de los Muertos celebrations. Almost every school in the middle, in the middle school level created artwork that was celebrated at the Tyler Museum of Art, and so they do a huge Dia de los Muertos exhibition every year. Of course, we cannot go without noting the incredible Dia de los, I like that word incredible, by the way. The incredible Dia de los Muertos Festival, they had at Caldwell. They had mariachi, they had an ofrenda, they had a costume, they had beautiful artwork. It was a great experience. Birdwell also did a Dia de los Muertos celebration, and it was an awesome experience as well. The reverse parade that took place for the Rotary Club's Christmas Parade, just about every single band for Tyler ISD participated, as well as Caldwell and the drill teams, and it was quite a show. I was very, very proud of the rich, diverse programs that we have here in Tyler, and they really showed what they did. It was a great showing at the parade. Again, we had outdoor pep rallies at Tyler High School, we had performances at Tyler High School, we had the Artsmas, which was an opportunity, it was for parents only, it was very controlled on who could come, but you got to see performances there. At Three Lakes, they performed a Christmas carol for the students of the school, and then they, we had art exhibits, and yet again, another opportunity to show how we're adapting and delivering. Christmas card contest. Christmas card contest, the Southern Bells Christmas presentation, and then at Caldwell, it was really cool. They had, as a mom at Caldwell, it was really neat to drive up and see the dance crew out there greeting everyone before we went to Christmas break. Oh, and one last thing. Wait a minute, that's last year's. This is this year's. For the second consecutive year, Tyler ISD is in the top, 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 and we are District of Distinction named by the Texas Art Education Association.
Well done.
Well, it's all thanks to the teachers and the kids. They have worked so hard this year. This, this award means so much because all of the components that went into awarding this award happened last academic year. So COVID happened, we're all at home, we're delivering instruction virtually, yet the visual arts teachers of Tyler ISD found a way to make it so dynamic that they still won this distinction. So that is something very, they should be very, very proud of. Coming up, we have UIL competitions, solo and ensemble concert sight reading. We have middle school and high school one at play. Tyler ISD again will host vase, junior vase and team, those are the visual arts scholastic event for high school, middle school and elementary. And then of course, Texas Big Art Day is March 4th. Spring semester is a very busy time of year for the visual performing arts because now it's contest season and we have to show what we've learned. So, that's what I've got for you today. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Okay, board, anybody have any questions?
I had one. I first want to compliment Mrs. Newton on excellent job this past year. Apparently you did, you've done very well in regards to the performing arts and I think that that's wonderful, I think it's important, I think it's essential for our district. Did have a concern coming from the middle school level in regards to the scheduling, going to block scheduling within the district. There were some concerns that students with the block schedule were not having the opportunity to participate in the performing arts at the middle school level like they had been prior to the block scheduling. So I posed this question to you in regards to, have you noticed a difference? And you may not have a time to look at it across the district, but have you noticed a difference in their, the ability to participate in the performing arts with the scheduling in the middle school level?
I really haven't. When we hit block scheduling, I was watching that, but when you look at the numbers across the district, the numbers have stayed pretty consistent across the district with regards to block scheduling at the middle school level. I haven't seen across the district a large discrepancy in the numbers.
Okay, so one particular middle school, and we, we had an opportunity to talk before the meeting tonight, that I gave you some statistics regarding some dropage and change in percentages that I hope you have an opportunity to look into and see if there's a significant reason according to the block scheduling or whatever the case may be, indicating that there was a drop, one year of 28% participation and then the next year a 58% drop. Those numbers seem significant, so I was wondering what the issues were concerning that in regards to the number of students that were able to participate in those particular programs on their campus in particular. And I was thinking that it may be across the board with the middle school block scheduling, but apparently it may be campus-specific. So I think it does require some investigation when you have half the students that were participating one year and the next year they're not. So I think that that does require something, some type of explanation and if you have the opportunity, would appreciate you looking at that.
Absolutely.
I ran some of those numbers for you. Thank you to Mr. Bog and his team for helping us with being able to have data at the, at the drop of a hat. So actually, in the middle schools, the first year that we implemented block scheduling, the numbers actually increased quite a bit in all of, at all of the campuses except the one that you're referring to. And then this year, actually at that specific campus, the number increased in the amount of students that are enrolled in performing arts and bands specifically. So yes, we saw a drop in the block scheduling that one particular year. I'm not ready to say that that's because of scheduling because all of the middle schools implemented block scheduling that year and they actually had an increase in the number of students that were participating in the art classes.
Well, let's, let's also remember, the reason the middle school principals asked for that were to be able to give their kids more time in reading and mathematics, the ones that needed it. So academic achievement at some of our campuses that have been struggling does take priority over that. The model was after Moore. Moore Middle School has been a vanguard as far as academic achievement has gone in this district for a long time. Claude Lane was principal there, he's now principal at Tyler High. The other principals wanted the same opportunity and the same strategy to be able to give their kids more academic time there. Moore, Moore's arts offerings, the quality of what they do there, just being a normal comprehensive school there is, is high quality. And so I'm going to have to say this too, it's not so much of a block scheduling, it's also, we're talking the same thing about athletics. It's going to be, are you offering an engaging opportunity, an engaging program, a quality, high-quality program that's engaging and attractive to kids or are they going to do something else?
Exactly.
And I, so I think that that's, that's, that's an equation that you have to answer too, not just on the numbers thing of just pure numbers of, well, the block scheduling caused this. It could be a programmatic, it could be a leadership thing, I don't know. We're just going to have to take a look at that and we'll certainly get you some data and some information back to you.
I will say that the students are clamoring suddenly at Bolter to take orchestra. So they'll, they'll abandon every class possible in order to get into orchestra this year and that's what we want, right? So we want kids to want to achieve in academic classes so that they can get into those electives, but, but it requires kid magnets to have kids want to be in those classes. And Mr. Lee is, you know, sixth and seventh graders want to get into orchestra, they want to suddenly play the viola. So it's, you know, I just think that's an important thing to note. That's just a piece of data for you that kids all of a sudden want in orchestra at Bolter.
Did we also look at, Bolter's a direct feeder into Tyler High, the amount of kids going into the big blue, blue band every year, that stayed pretty consistent, had it, other than COVID year where we had drops at both band locations either because kids got sick with COVID or they did not want to participate because of some of the issues that were there. Has that stayed pretty steady as far as the amount of students that we've had in the big blue band?
Yes, it stayed pretty consistent other than some COVID anomalies.
Okay. Because that'd be something, that'd be a piece of data that I'd be interested in is, how does that translate, translate into after they leave that middle school experience, are they sticking with band? Much like we're talking about with middle school athletics, what are they participating in when they actually go to the high school and they have a choice, a pretty diverse choice of other arts opportunities as well?
Well, and you have to give kudos to the band directors at the high school too because they're actively going to the feeder middle schools and recruiting those kids to help build their programs too.
Yeah.
And they're, the high schools are doing a lot of work at teaching kids similar to what was happening in, you know, in, that Mr. Priest talked about with athletics. I mean, if a high school kid gets up to ninth grade and they don't know how to play an instrument, then you got to hand it to Larry Wade and the other directors, they're having to teach the kids from square zero. So we, we need those middle school programs and we're aware of that.
Okay, well, I don't want you to think that I don't believe in academics because that's my first thing.
Oh, absolutely.
Performance, performing arts I enjoy, but if they're not doing the academics, I'm very concerned about that and that should be the first priority, the reading and the math, et cetera. And these experts are, as I consider, icing on the cake. If you can, if you can achieve in the classroom with the basic fundamental academic things, yes, you can do those other things. That's who I raised my kids, but that's different. But if they didn't, if they didn't achieve in, in the classroom, the basic fundamentals, they didn't participate in the other things. But a lot of parents don't do that. But I do want to make sure that they do have the opportunity because all kids don't have the same talent and abilities. So I'm concerned about them having that ability to choose choir or band or, or orchestra or whatever if they have that desire and ambition and ability to continue to develop that.
Well, no pun intended, but you're preaching to the choir.
Well, I just filled out my sixth grader's choice sheet, so the choice sheet is obviously the four core and the academics, but then she gets, I think, two electives in the sixth grade year. Is that right, middle school people? So PE, she's, she's an athlete and then she chose art, I believe. So if kids make the choice, we don't prevent kids from going out. There are some times in our anomalies in schedules where they can't make it work. That happens in secondary schools all the time. But if they want to choose arts, the band, orchestra, we're going to get them in there and they're not going to be lacking for budget or, or instruments. We, we don't tell people no. Ron Jones can tell you what a poorly funded middle school fine arts program looks like because he used to run, run a middle school in a district that did not care for its kids arts-wise. Our budget's pretty good and I think whenever we did the bond back in, what, 17 or 18, we said that 91% of our kids have an art experience exposure per year. That's impressive. So we're dedicated to the arts and we'll get those numbers back to you to see if there's an anomaly there that we can maybe, can maybe fix within, within certain parameters.
Do they have to take the SPO or some other special needs classes and that take away one of these?
It could, but we're, we're going to try to work with the kid in regard to that. I think there's a little bit of a misunderstanding at, at some of our campuses that may have an advisory period and then maybe ban, additional ban time was part of that advisory period. Well, from what I understand, talking to one principal, that additional advisory period was where if you weren't successful in two of your benchmarks, not one of the two, but if you were unsuccessful in both of those benchmarks, your advisory was switched to a more academic as opposed to extracurricular advisory period. And there might've been a few kids, I don't think there was that, that many, but there's some, certain things that a principal has to do...
Oh, yeah.
...that to be successful. And maybe there was things that weren't being done by previous principals and we were not being successful and we have to have conversations with y'all about why that school's not being successful.
Right.
So anyway, we'll, we'll look into it and I think that there's some, maybe some adjustments we can make with inputs. We will certainly not be preventing any kid from wanting to participate in a fine arts activity that can.
Okay.
Okay? You have my word on that.
Well, and I have to second the, there's a word that you use a lot, robust. I have to use that word. We have robust fine arts programs here in Tyler. I have the pleasure of working with fine arts directors all across the state and the country and when I hear what's happening in their districts and I know what's happening here, there's really great things happening here as opposed to other areas.
It's interesting, in 2011, when we had the last $5 billion cut in public ed, a lot of districts went back and cut their fine arts to the bone and not added back. This district back then chose to status quo if not add. And it's, it's impressive, the, the arts offerings that we do have here, I'm not trying to champion that because it's real, a lot of credit to the board at that time and the administration in 2011 for, for protecting that. So if, if we've got an issue at a campus, Sandy Newton's certainly someone they can talk to, they can talk to the SIO back there, I think Mr. Bitter's in charge of, of middle schools, Mr. Jones, and I'm more than welcome to get engaged in any conversation with any staff person about what we can do to make their program as high quality as possible. Because that's what I want, I want to win and I want kids to participate. So we can do that.
Thank you.
All right.
Ms. Newton, I have one quick thing.
Yes, sir.
The Dia de los Muertos event, I heard awesome feedback from that. It was very respectful and very well done and Caldwell did a really great job with it. But the mariachi band is what I really heard about and I hope that some, somebody at one of our high schools is thinking about taking those kids when they get past eighth grade and turning them into some sort of competitive mariachi group because that would be really cool.
Well, you know, it's interesting you bring that up because TMEA has actually added two contests to their slate. They've added percussion, which is drum line, and they've added, which Caldwell has one of those, and they've also added a mariachi contest. So it's getting a lot of traction and yes, I'm trying to work behind the scenes to see that they have a place to go.
Awesome.
And I've been working with Mr. Remley to get another guitarón for his mariachi group.
I can see some silver and blue uniforms and some silver and red uniforms. I can, I can see that.
I, I can see it too.
That'd be awesome.
That was a great event. It was very well done.
Well, thank you for your presentation and we're always happy to see hardware displayed right in front of us.
It's very heavy, so let me start loading it up now.
Well, you're starting a collection there.
It's the teachers, they're doing it.
I hope it grows.
Me too. Thank you.
Okay, yes ma'am, thank you.
So as she's packing up, we're going to ask Gary Brown to come up to the table. Gary's going to give us an opportunity to hear about competitive academics. We are in the middle of the year and our competitive academic season is mostly in the spring, but we certainly like hearing from Gary Brown. CCMR, College Career Military Ready, this is a big part of our school system and we think we are doing a pretty good job at it. And this supports that CCMR goal that we have, one of the board's goals every year. Mr. Brown?
Certainly does. Board members, Dr. Crawford, I appreciate the opportunity to, to share this mid-year update with you and you are correct, this is very heavy in the spring semester as far as competitive academics. But, so I do want to go over just a few things. And one of the things I'll say right up front, we started this last year, so we talk a lot about 5A and 6A. And I think this is exciting and I don't want to put them under too much pressure here, but Early College High School actually started last year working on a competitive academics team and we hope this spring that we're going to be able to have a 3A, Early College High School academic district meet and go through the same process as our, as Tyler High School and Tyler Legacy. So I just wanted to begin with that, I think that's pretty exciting looking ahead. But we know that students, and it does marry very well with, with CCMR, the students that go above and beyond and challenge themselves academically, that they're much more likely to be successful as they move through our academic system. And so it's, it's the diversity that they get to encounter, I, I think, Mr. Washman, you mentioned the fact that students get to compete against other students from other schools and other grade levels and just that interaction and competitiveness, it's just like it would be on a football field or on a basketball court. I mean, they're very competitive and they take this very seriously. But as you look ahead, the bulk of my presentation really is to look at the calendar for the spring and to give you a snapshot of what's ahead. At the end of this month, actually next week, we have our cross-examination debate competitions that are going to take place. The 5A competition will be held in Acaduches at Stephen F. Austin and then we followed up the following week, the 6A competition will be held at Mesquite ISD at the Professional Learning Center. So that's kind of the beginning. We did have one academic UL competition that is not complete. Ordinarily by this time in the year it would be, but it's state congress. Normally that would take place, the state competition at, at the beginning of January. We actually had three students from Legacy High School that advanced from the regional, actually had the regional champion in, in, in state congress. They will be competing in, in February, so that's something that's moved from last year's calendar to this year's calendar. Hopefully in the summer, when I come back to you with some summary results, we'll be able to see, see some good results there. The middle school UL academic meet, this year will be held in Moore Middle School and that's scheduled for February 20th. I've met a couple of times with the coordinators and they're working to get everything on track and have a really good plan for bringing kids in the building and out of the building and keeping things socially distanced and so on. So I think they've got a really good plan in place for that. Then when we get to March, and this is where I'll bring in once again, Early College High School. So we do have the 6A speech meet in Mesquite, followed up then with the academic meet that's going to follow and that's where the number sense and, and calculatifications and all the different various academic competitions are held. The, the 5A is going to be held in Acaduches, so the speech portion will be in Acaduches High School. And the actual academic meet then are going to move to Lufkin High School, they're sharing the, the burden on this. At the same time, if we're able to fill the team and get them there, the 3A meet that Early College High School students would compete in will be held at Pittsburgh, in Pittsburgh at the Regional Service Center. Then the UIL Elementary Academic Meet this year, we actually met last week as a group of campus coordinators and they have made the decision, if you'll remember in the past years, we held two separate meets and then advanced the winners from the separate meets to a citywide championship. Well, this year they made the decision that they reduced some of the events and they're going to hold a single meet one time and that's going to be held at the Current Technology Center and they moved it from February to March to allow just a little more time for preparation. And they moved it from February to March to allow just a little more time for preparation. So I think there's a really good plan in place for that. Then for the students in March, it's kind of a March, April, May, if you want to think of the progression chronologically. March is the district UL. April, for those students that advance beyond district, will compete for regional. 5A, once again, will be held at Prosper High School. If we were to have 3A, Early College High School students advance, that's actually held at Tyler Junior College. So that will be held right here in Tyler. And then for our 6A students that advance, they go to Baylor University at that same time. Then, of course, the prize, the goal for all of these students competing is to move on into May. And so the academic portion or side of the meet occurs at the very end of May, April and May. And then for those that do advance in the speech competition, they have an additional month. And they do this, that's actually right when we get out of school for the speech meet in Austin. That's our schedule for the spring.
It's exciting. I mean.
A lot of stuff.
Watching kids compete academically, I think there's nothing better. I mean, it is, for one, they're all smarter than I am. And it's just incredible how smart and intelligent our, and how capable our students are. They're so talented. And it's just neat to see. You know, starting at the elementary level, we didn't do much of that, you know, here in the near future. But since Gary's taken over this role and we've assigned it to him, he smiled at us and said, yes, sir, and we're going to do what we can. But let's talk about that feeder pattern and giving kids an early experience and not just going to school. I think that that kind of fits into what we're trying to do here in Tyler and make this a very robust experience for our kids. Not just athletics, not just arts, but competitive academics.
Absolutely.
Okay, any comments or questions?
I have a question about the academic meet. What's included in that? You said number cents. What else is included in that now?
There's a whole litany. I've actually had it in previous presentations. I'll be glad to get you the full list. I don't want to try to just pop them off the top of my head right now. But it graduates, it's from elementary. I want to say there are ten to twelve competitions that accelerates at fourteen or fifteen at the middle school level. And high school covers every imaginable area from science, math, social studies, language arts.
Well, I was just concerned about the number cents and the, yeah. And they used to have a calculator-type thing, competition. They made it before your time.
Computer science, calculator, applications, number cents.
Yeah. And even before that, they had a slide ruler. But anyway, that's way back.
That is way back. We don't do slide rule anymore. Actually, I had that come up the other day in an engineering class.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I will say this, board, that you saw some pictures here of Ms. Newton. Kudos to our teachers and our coaches and our directors. I mean, we all know how anxious we've been just on having school. But to do the things that are extracurricular, after-school, spending more time with our students during the middle of a pandemic, man, it just makes you feel good. Because you see them with smiles. I think that they love competing as much as they can. And I just, I want to make sure that we recognize them tonight for the, I don't want to call it a risk, because I think we all know the science that's out there, that there is a disease out there, and it is something to contend with. But our teachers have been fearless and courageous, and our coaches have, to give our kids, like Mr. Burford was talking about, the opportunities that they have. And it's just, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, man, we couldn't do it without them, obviously. But they've really stepped up to the plate this year more than any other time when they could have really bailed out and said, nah, I'm not going to do extracurricular activities this year. And we haven't heard much about it. That's the great thing about it. I know that there's some concern, but we haven't heard too much noise about it. Y'all might have, but we have not. And certainly, kudos to them.
Indeed. Thank you, Dr. Brown. I always call you Dr. Brown.
Dr. Brown.
Okay, well, I think that's all of the updates. Moving on to Business, Legal, Finance, Consent Agenda. We were going to go ahead and pull Item B, which is Gifts and Donations, as we always do. And I do not believe that we were going to pull anything else in this particular meeting. So first, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve Items A, C, and D.
I move that we approve Items A, C, and D.
Second. Thank you, Dr. Nation. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? As have it, motion carries. Okay, we're moving on to Item B, which is Gifts and Donations.
Love this part. You guys really like it because it shows the philanthropic spirit that our community has for our schools, providing us additional dollars for our students and our teachers to use to make the school system great. Grace and Andrew Cryer have donated $5,000 to Ramey Elementary School. We're extremely happy that the Cryers are partnering with us for $5,000 to Ramey. Ramey is getting it over there with Mr. Rahoe as principal. And we are certainly excited that we've got the community recognizing their efforts. We also have here tonight Betsy Jones, Executive Director of the Tyler ISD Foundation, to present, along with other foundation members, to present the Grants for Great Ideas Big Check at the tune of $89,392.13. Ms. Jones, if you would like to take the podium so that you can give us a little preview of the big check you have.
Thank you, guys. Well, good evening, board and Dr. Crawford. Thank you, guys, so much for letting me come tonight to present our very fun Big Check for Grants for Great Ideas this year. We are so pleased to be awarding 29 grants for almost $90,000 this year, which is the highest amount in over 10 years. And those grants should impact 9,400 students in 21 campuses. So we're just so thrilled with the quality of grants the teachers submitted this year and the fact that we just have such amazing teachers who are willing to do anything they can to engage their students. We did host Grant Patrol earlier this week. It was very wet, but very wonderful as well. And so thank you, Dr. Nation and Mr. Washman and Dr. Crawford, for coming out. We loved getting to see the teachers laugh and cry and jump up and down when they got their big checks. And then I did just also want to say a special thank you to the TISD Communications Department. They did a phenomenal job covering our event. We had live Twitter feeds, and we had media releases, and we had photos and newspaper, and it was awesome. So thank you, guys, so much. I also want to say a big thank you to John Baggart. He always helps to provide us with a very swanky silver and black bus to tour around the campuses. And so we are very grateful for that. And then just a big thank you to the principals. They are very flexible and welcoming for us. It's a tough day from a logistics standpoint, and so we're just so grateful for the warm welcome that we received. So if you guys don't mind, I would love to present this check and get a picture with you all, if you don't mind.
Hey, before we do that, can I just, as the board rep for the TISD Foundation, just want to let everybody know that Betsy has done an exceptional job revitalizing the foundation. It is no accident that we're setting records for participation and for grants. Her stewardship, her professionalism, the way she communicates with board members and community partners is all excellent. So thank you. And I was very pleased, the last foundation board meeting, the TISD board had a higher participation rate in donations than the full foundation board did. So we're winning there, too. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Chris. And thank you all so much for your support. We are so, so grateful.
How about a real quick picture, if y'all don't mind?
Yep.
Okay. Before we move on, I do believe that is the second month in a row we have received funds from outside the district, for our district, in the area of about $90,000. That's incredible. That is incredible. That says a lot about our community. So thank you to the TISD Foundation.
Did we vote on that?
Actions.
What's that?
Actions.
Yes. I will consider a motion to approve our Gifts and Donations.
I move we approve the Gifts and Donations. Thankful for the TISD Foundation and Grace and Andrew Cryer. They live out of state, donated to Ramey Elementary, which is great. We appreciate them thinking about their old hometown.
That's awesome. Okay, anybody second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As have it, and the motion carries. Good deal. Okay, moving on to our Curriculum, Instruction, and Consent Agenda. There's just two items on there. And if everybody's okay with it, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve both of those items.
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. Moving on to our discussion portion, which is our district calendar, the first reading of it, and then a local policy first reading as well.
So we'll go over the district calendar. We'll do the annual reading of the district calendar for y'all as we present that. Just for the new trustees, we have a first and a second reading of that. It spans, I guess it spans a month. There's public comment that's actually online about that. Just so y'all know, in regard to thinking about our students that are struggling, you know, we've talked about a year-long intercessional calendar. Those could be in our future, maybe not a district-wide thing, but maybe in a pocket or two or at a school or two. We're not going to present that for this coming year, although there is a group of, a cluster of schools that we affectionately refer to as JAPER that are planning for some, a little bit different attack this summer, specifically within their communities. They're the communities that have the highest risk loads of socioeconomics barriers inside of there. And we really think that those kids can really use some additional schooling as we're coming off this COVID fog, for lack of a better term. But as far as the district-wide calendar goes here, we're going to present that for next year. Again, we are studying an intercessional type of calendar. It would take a lot of presentation and community involvement within that cluster of schools to get the momentum built. We're not going to do that right now. But those principals asked that we do continue that discussion as we look forward to maybe a second, year two of coming out of COVID. So let's talk about the calendar for next year. Pretty creative calendar. We want to thank the community members that were part of this, on the calendar committee. Various folks are part of that. I think it's listed in the agenda item, kind of the general membership in regard to who is on that district planning committee. There's a community members, we talked to the Chamber of Commerce, we talked to a lot of different people. We talked to parent groups, we talked to teachers, and obviously, district staff to put this calendar together. It will be posted online after tonight. In August, we have that one week of professional development workdays. We actually start school, and it's proposed to start on August the 16th, it's a full week. A little bit different this year from this year. This year, we had a midweek start. But every year's a little different because of when school is allowed to start and when we want to try to end it before Memorial Day and along with protecting some of the important opportunities for some well-deserved breaks for our teachers, staff, and our students. We'll work all the way through those three weeks of August. We'll get to September 6th, which is Labor Day. And then we actually have programmed in here at least one day off per month for our teachers and our staff and our students, which I think is a very nice little, I don't want to say perk, but a little neat little thing that we've programmed into this year's calendar. When we get to October, we'll have an early release day on October 14th, which will have professional development for our teachers on that day. And then we actually have a little mini fall break, a little Friday off there for a three-day weekend. We get to November, and then there is where it's incredible that you get to work in education because you get nine straight days off, nine days off. We really encourage our staff, if they're going to get married during these times, to maybe get married during these breaks. Sometimes that doesn't always work out, Ms. Atkins. Sometimes they like to take those nine days off and then get married. But that's why the state gives them personal days, and the board affords them some personal days, or some sick days as well. Anyways, nine straight days off for Thanksgiving. What other industry or profession could you see nine straight days? In December, we're looking at December 17th is the day that we get out for Christmas. And yes, that is a Christmas break, everybody. I know that that's been a controversy here in Tyler, Texas before. Not a controversy, but something that the school system did not talk about. But I guarantee you, we wouldn't be taking time off if there wasn't that important date in there, Dr. Nation. Early Release Day on December 17th, just like we have been the last couple or three years. That's a pretty popular thing that we do. We're going to have 16 straight days of Christmas break. What other profession or industry, Dr. Jones, would you see 16 straight days of vacay if you're a teacher or staff person? Of course, our facilities management people, if they're still in here, they're like, we haven't got those days in four years.
Maybe less.
So maybe next year, they can take those days off. They've done a great job. We actually come back on January the 3rd. We apologize, we could not give a workday this year, Ms. Barber, to, you know, to come back and just get ready. Because, you know, after 16 straight days, you need a workday to be prepared for the students to come back. So we're actually starting school when we get back that first Monday. That was one of the things we had to give up this year in order to have these one day off per month. January 17th, obviously, is an important day for us. We just got through memorializing Dr. King. And we, you know, we didn't get to have the normal events that we have here in Tyler. We do a really professional stand-up job here. We're hoping that, you know, for past COVID, next year, we can get back to having our parade and having both high school bands participate along with the other activities. We are participating in the Tyler Together Race Relations Martin Luther King.
Essay contest.
Essay contests and art contests as well? They're not doing the art this year. So we are certainly proud to partner with them. And Jeff and Ms. Searls do a great job in making sure that we're participating, and we're happy to do that. February 10th and 11th, right there, that's one of your three-day weekends. Early Release Day on the 10th for professional development. You get a little three-day weekend in there, a little mini winter break. February kind of gets long after January as we roll through things. So it's going to be a nice little advantage there to have one day off for the staff. March, Spring Break, right there, is a nine-day Spring Break. Incredible, nine-day Spring Break, so that you can refresh and reload for the sprint to the end. We always debate on whether or not that week needs to be there or maybe one week later. And just so everybody knows, the public knows, the board knows, we look at when the assessment's going to be, the testing calendar, and how it matches up for us to be able to do any type of reviews, last-minute type of reviews, whether or not we want to come off of a break and then get tested or if we want to have a week to get our sea legs back underneath us. So it's one of those things where we try to do that. I don't like it that week, but that's sometimes forced on us because it's so dang early in March that I would like to have that third week. And it's starting to see that, like, most colleges and universities are starting to match up. So if you have kids that are taking off, it's all over the place. You can't match up with what Texas or A&amp;M or even Baylor's doing. But certainly, UT Tyler and TJC, we kind of all get together and match that up in case you have siblings that are going to those schools. And sometimes, they don't even want to spend Spring Break with you anyways if they're off at college, Reverend Hager. We have kids that are college-age now. We know that, that's coming. April, we get into April, we always take Good Friday off before, or excuse me, that's actually, yeah, that's Good Friday right there on the 15th. That is something that we've protected here for the new trustees. Six years ago, seven years ago now, the superintendent came here, and we had marked that date as a bad weather day. And then I was getting people looking at me going, you better take Good Friday off in Tyler, Texas. And I said, well, why are we making it a bad weather day? Because if we have what we had the other day, we may have to take it as a bad weather day. Then they're going to get mad that the mean old superintendent made everybody go to school on Good Friday. So we made a commitment to make that an actual holiday for us, that we're not risking, we're not going to take the chance that we're going to have some big ice storm. chance that we're going to have some big ice storm and have to take that day off. We take Good Friday off in Tyler, Texas. There's an early release day before that. The 27th of May is actually the last day of instruction. That's an early release day as well. We actually have graduations the weekend before that, so we don't butt it up next to Memorial Day for our families. As y'all know, our graduations start that Wednesday. It's a big festival that we have where we graduate, rise, then Early College, and then either Legacy or Tyler High, alternating years on Friday and Saturday. Those are always fun, dodging the lightning bolts in the rainstorms. June of 2022 is some staff bad weather makeup days. We've got enough minutes programmed into this calendar to wear bad weather makeup days. We'd have to have about a month's worth of ice for us to have to take any bad weather time. So really, those bad weather makeup days in the backend are contractual days for staff as well. Anyways, there is your calendar. We'll post it online. Do any comments that I can take at this time, that's fine. It's a first reading. You want to, if you got any questions in between the first and the second reading, we are more than welcome to, to speak with you all about that.
Well, I'd like to say that I like this calendar. I really like the way it looks because it's giving people time off each month. I like the early release, the day before, the time off, and then it gets all 180 days in and we're through at the end of May. So it's great. It looks good.
You brought up a good point. So the 180 days is a little different from what we used to do, which was 177, Tasha? 176. So we actually added four instructional days. The reason we did that is so that we could access summer funding. So in order to do that, you have to have a 180-day calendar, and then whatever you get in half-day ADA in your summer programming, whatever summer programs you offer, we actually get funded for that. So it's a little trick that folks are using that's built into statute, and we're really excited about that. We looked at this a few years ago and just didn't know if we had the guts to pull it off, but I think that we can do it now because we were able to get off before Memorial Day but still meet that 180-day requirement. So we will qualify for that half-day funding.
Okay, we'll review it, and I'm sure if we have any questions or comments, we'll come to you with them.
Absolutely.
But thank you for presenting that thoroughly. Okay, local policy EIF, first reading.
Now, this is something the Board and I have had discussions with, along with the high school principals, about a, a local requirement for a course called PATH. I can't remember what PATH stands for, Dr. Jones. What's the acronym stand for?
It's just for PATH, like the pathway that's a college career.
Okay. We're calling it Senior Seminar. It's something that our community has said that they'd like to see out of our students. The Board and the superintendent have had to have, have had discussions about things such as character development, citizenship, morals, ethics, mentorship as they're going into, to, to college.
Patriotism.
Patriotism is something we really want to take a hard look at and see what we can do, start working on the hearts of our people, because we do have a great country and we need to make it better. But we can also start doing that with the youth of our, of our, of our community. Financial literacy is a big thing, and we're looking at Dave Ramsey's Financial Peace University as the actual curriculum for that. I think it's a nine-week course, if I'm not mistaken.
It can be nine weeks.
It can be nine weeks. And so that will take up a chunk of the nine weeks as we go forward. So this is a first reading for y'all, front and back. We will move forward with this. It is on the choice sheets, as is Mexican-American Studies and African-American Studies as well. So these are three new courses that we're adding on to our high school menu of courses as we go forward.
Okay. That's all real exciting.
And we, and we will present more in-depth what this course will look like, once y'all give us the go-ahead to go forward. And we might even have this, I think, we'll probably have a presentation at the, at the second reading of this for you, so that y'all can actually vote on it before that.
That would be good, and so the community could hear about it and understand the nuts and bolts behind it.
Yep.
All very important things. I'm sure we can all agree on that. Okay, well, does anybody have any comments or questions on, on that first reading? I'm, I'm sure we can just review it and, and come back with comments and questions.
Any questions in between now and the second reading is great. And then obviously you can ask some questions at the second reading as well if you need to.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to future business, we have a board workshop, February 4th, regular meeting, February 15th. And then we do have a couple of elections coming up for Districts 5 and 7, and a special election for District 3 for the unexpired term. So I'm hoping we can keep the band together and keep on rocking and rolling. And, but those are, those are big dates. So that's all we've got coming up. And then I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Eyes have it. Meeting is adjourned.